Okay. It's 2:07. Call the meeting to order. Any items from the public? No? Larry?
I want to approve the agenda.
Oh, you want to approve the agenda, alright. You got a motion?
I'm going to approve the agenda of Tuesday, February 1, 2022.
We got a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Alright, Larry. Now it's your turn. You got any books yet? Get any printed out?
We have, uh, we've got a lot of calls and we're, like I say, we're nine thousand letters we sent out. I thought we'd have more people here. But we're doing a great job, you know, talking to the people and when they realize that market's going up, they, they understand that, so. We do have some changes. Uh, I think Doc has some for residential, he's got four of them. And John has one. We have no books to write them in, but as long as we get on record that they all approved changes, then we keep, record of that. But if you want hard copies of that, we can get you that too.
You're gonna get many copies of those, especially from the,
We can do that.
That's what you normally do, don't you?
You want copies of those changes?
Copies of what you made or give me a spreadsheet. Steve helps me with the minutes and I'll scope out the period.
Okay. Alright, we can do that. We can do that. I'll let them present those. Other than that, we have nobody waiting to appear.
Okay, we're gonna review that now? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Everybody.
Think everybody knows me, I'm Doc Tranery. First of all, Penny, we do have your files already printed. I'll give them to you. Bear with me, I'm new at this. Little old too.
Me too. Not as old as Jim, but.
Not as old as me. Like I say, we've got two. The first two I'm gonna go over is managed timber. When we left here the other day on Thursday, we went back to our office and we got emails from the state saying they changed two of the properties to managed timber, so. That's the first two I'm gonna be going over. Let's see, the first one's in Hedgesville. It's District 4, Map 27, Parcel 18. And what they've done, they've taken, uh, it had seventy-two point ten acres on Cannon Hill Road and they took sixty-two point oh-nine acres and put it in managed timber. And the current value before we changed it to managed timber, uh, the land was two hundred and one thousand three hundred. The building was three hundred and ninety-three thousand and the total was five hundred and ninety-four thousand three hundred. And the assessed value on that was a hundred and twenty thousand seven eighty on the land, on the building was two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and on the total was three hundred and fifty-six thousand five eighty. Now, once we moved it to managed timber and the proposed amount, the state moved, the, the whole, they moved the sixty-nine acres to the managed timber, which lowered the appraised valley, value to one fifteen eight hundred and on that land and on the building was three hundred and ninety-three thousand and the total was five hundred and eight thousand eight hundred. On the assessed value, the land went to sixty-nine thousand four eighty and on the, on the building, it went to two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred and the total went to three oh five two eighty. On the total. Now, on the managed timber part, the appraised value was three thousand six hundred and the assessed value was two thousand one hundred and sixty with the total value coming to three hundred and seven thousand four forty.
And that was, and you said that was all on District 4, Map 27, Parcel 18?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Property owner is Thomas Grossy.
Can you spell that thing?
G R O S S I.
Okay.
Okay.
You wanna, you wanna handle these one at a time? Or do you have another managed timber?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yeah, this is off Tuscaloosa Pike. This is District 3, Map 14, Parcel 14. And it is ninety-eight acres of managed timber. This is off of Tuscaloosa Pike to Panther Lane. It's all, and it's all in timber. And the state granted them total timber. So, but the current value was one hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred for the land for appraised. And it, the assessed value then went to seventy-six thousand six hundred and eighty and that was the total values too, since the city, so no building.
Can you give me that district map, pick and parcel number again?
That district is 031414.
031414?
Yeah.
Okay, and the name on that?
Uphill LLC.
Uphill?
Yes, Uphill LLC.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion on the Thomas Griffey and the Uphill LLC modifications.
I'll make the, if, can I ask a question right here?
We can make a motion and then.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendations presented by the assessor's office today.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Doc, is, they, I don't understand exactly how this works, so do they put their property in managed timber like through Department of Natural Resources?
Yes, yes.
So it's already been registered with them?
Yeah, they already registered. They sent us a copy saying, hey, this much land has been put in. And just like this, I didn't get quite to it at the end. But the property now, the appraised value of that property, which on our PRC says zero, the appraised value is eight thousand one hundred and ninety and the assessed value is four thousand nine hundred and ten. So you can see how much it drops when they put it in the managed timber.
Do they have to do this every year?
Yes, they have to reapply every year.
Yes, sir, thank you. I, I just didn't know the process.
Yes, they apply to the state, the state is on grants.
As long as you've got the supporting documents.
Yes.
Good to go.
Yep.
Okay. Got a motion and a second, have a little discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Opposed? That's good.
Okay. Alright, our next one is in Mill Creek District. And this here is actually something we overlooked in our office. This should have been changed before we give you the books, but we, they got it looked over. And they didn't get key for twenty-two yet. In this, in this case, uh, this is 076L477. And what this is, is the owner actually sent us in information saying they finished their basement last year and, and added a bath in the basement and added a shed when we added all that to the total. So I'm gonna give you the, the current value and then on the changes, okay? Our current value on the land for the, uh, appraised value is forty-three thousand four hundred for the building is one hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred with a total of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred. Now, the assessed value for that, the land is twenty-six thousand forty and the building is eighty thousand eight twenty with the total being a hundred and six thousand eight sixty. After us making the changes to the property, we added the third bath, we added three hundred and seventy-eight square feet finished in the basement and a building, a shed. The appraised value of the land stayed the same, it was forty-three thousand four hundred. The building value went to a hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and the total value went to a hundred and ninety-five thousand nine hundred. The assessed value, uh, for the land was twenty-six thousand forty for the building was ninety-one thousand five hundred and the total was a hundred and seventeen thousand five forty. And with that change, we actually didn't, just the change itself didn't create the timber increase, but once we went back to last year's value compared to the set value now, it made a ten percent increase and we sent them a letter saying for the ten percent increase.
Okay. So what was the total difference in, in value? Do you have that?
Yes, from, from this year's change, the, the difference of value, it went up ten thousand six hundred and eighty.
Ten thousand six hundred and eighty? And, uh,
That was the changes.
And what was the taxpayer?
The taxpayer on this one, uh, Rohan Mohite.
Rohan?
Rohan, yes.
Did you say, when you said the property values, did you say forty-two for the first time and forty-three for the second time, or did you say forty-three for both times?
Forty-three for both times.
Okay. I must wrote that.
Uh, Madison.
Okay. Alright, I'll accept a motion, uh, I guess an office air motion for the ten thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the assessor for the Mill Creek District, parcel in question.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Doc, the square footage addition for the basement, was that based off of the square footage value of the living space upstairs?
Yes. No, that's based off the value on the permit probably from, they finished so much square footage in the basement.
Okay.
You see, some of them still unfinished. Yes. It was three hundred and seventy-eight square feet finished in the basement and they also added a bath and a shed. And like I say, that was overlooked. We should have had that already done, but then again, we didn't.
Okay. Do you want?
Thank you.
Better than that one? Everything's good?
Yep, everybody, and all in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're good.
Okay. My fourth one is in Hedgesville District. What this is, the owner of the land, which is William Mason, he actually had a special ID on his property, which he had a mobile home. And the mobile home was owned by someone else, I think his grandson. He put it in the property now. The grandson left it and said, here, put it on your property. And this should have been key before you got overlooked too, so. This is what changed on this because we added the mobile home, the skirting and the deck to it, which raised his value too. And this is 04364.2, it's parcel. Okay? Uh, let's see. Uh, when we, when we, our value as of current before we made the changes, uh, the land was fifty-eight thousand dollars. The building value before was ninety-six thousand seven hundred dollars and a hundred, the total was a hundred and fifty-four thousand seven hundred dollars. The assessed value for that was thirty-four thousand eight hundred for the land and for the building was fifty-eight thousand twenty and the total was ninety-two thousand eight twenty. Okay, once we added the two thousand mobile home and the, like I say, the skirting and open frame porch, it wasn't a deck, it was an open frame porch, to the property, that changed, our land stayed the same at fifty-eight thousand. The building changed, I don't know, this is, um, appraised value, uh, to a hundred and eight thousand five hundred with the total being a hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred. The assessed value on the land was thirty-four, it's forty, thirty-four thousand eight hundred. The building is sixty-five thousand one hundred with the total being ninety-nine thousand nine hundred. And also with this property, with the increase and with everything going up this year and you add the mobile home, it created a ten percent increase under two, which we also mailed to the government, so they know.
And what was the total difference in cost?
Total difference in cost was, uh, the assessed value was seven thousand eight hundred. And that's the difference in the change, which would be in the books to now. And the appraised value was eleven thousand eight hundred.
Okay, I'll accept a motion for the William Mason property.
Mr. Taryn, I'm going to accept the assessor's appraisal, reappraisal of this property in Hedgesville District.
Second motion. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, sir. Doc, how much property was involved in it?
In the last one?
Yes, sir.
It was, what's that? Uh, three acres.
And how was the mobile home?
The mobile home was two thousand.
Okay, so then, and you work off the, the book value of that, right?
We don't set that value.
Right, okay, good deal.
Thank you. And like I say, it was on a special ID, the same exact mobile home. We just transferred it from personal property belonging to his grandson. We left it to the man of the property, so. So we just transferred it from one to the other.
So it's still personal property or is it transferred into real?
It's transferred to real estate. Because like I said before, it was owned by somebody else and now it's in the land.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're good?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one I'd like to present to everyone. This concerning Tommy Park Campground, I don't know if you're aware, it's on, we're supposed to fight, you know, right to get the, you know, like we'll get in the bridge area.
Many years of experience.
Well, there you go, okay, good. Um, and what had happened, we get a listing every year from the campground telling us because they have a lot of personal property homes there. Camp owns grant. The, uh, the homes are owned by different people, they will buy and sell. We get a listing that shows us that we have a new owner, but we don't get from them though is a date. For them, as long as it's a calendar year, it's fine. For us, of course, it's July 1st date. Well, I had gone there to visit a, a house there that was transferred and left a hang tag, but the owner didn't call me back on that hang tag until last week. And he informed me then that he bought well after July 1st. I had already transferred that home from the park into a personal property account to evaluate from the real estate. Well, I gotta put it back on now because of finding that information. Currently, the appraisal for the land at the Tommy Park is, uh, one million four hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred. Leaves an assessment of eight seventy-one six twenty. A building value of four million one hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred. An assessment of two million four hundred eighty-one thousand three hundred, which would give us a total appraisal of five million five hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred and an assessment of three million three hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty. Once we add the home back in, the appraised value of the land remains unchanged at one million four hundred fifty-two thousand seven hundred. The assessed value would stay, remain at eight hundred and seventy-one six twenty. The building value would change from four to four million one hundred twenty-three thousand, which yields an assessment of two million four hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred. A total appraisal of five million five hundred seventy-five thousand seven hundred and a, and an assessment of three million three hundred forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty. See, that's wrong, I got that backwards. My golly. I got that, but I gave you the, I gave you the change first instead of giving you the current. So I had those flipped around. The total assessment appraisal would, for your consideration, would be five million five hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred with an assessment of three million three hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty. So I had that backwards, my bad.
Okay. What, what is the actual difference between it?
It would be about twelve thousand five hundred difference in the building value. That's what it amounts. Land value would not change, all those have been there. Buildings have been there forever, but just, just change.
Okay. Alright, I'll entertain a motion for the Tommy Park Campground, twelve thousand five hundred dollar modification. Some of, second. A motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, John, how, how would you normally be notified when a property is sold? It's, it's, there's no deed, I'm sure.
No, there's not. And it's kind of akin to what happens at the airport. When hangars down there will sell because the airport owns the land. And so when hangar sales, we have to hope that they notify us because it doesn't go through the normal consideration to the folks on the site, same as there. They are kind enough to provide us with the listing at, every year, but like I said, there's no dates on those listings, they don't provide that, they just say it transferred. And so sometimes with these, we have to kind of make an educated guess about if it's before July 1st or after July 1st. This one unfortunately was, was after, but I didn't know it.
The same happens with Blair too.
Same, yes.
That's true, it's always been selling.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second and some discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Opposed? Okay. Is that all you have for us?
Yes, sir, that's all.
So I'm assuming you guys will be available if we need anything?
Okay.
Will do. Thank you, guys. We're about fifteen minutes behind schedule already, Maria.
Am I up?
You're up.
Okay.
Kicking in the gear.
What's that?
Kicking in the gear.
Okay. I have a lot of bags.
His idea of kicking it into your gear and yours maybe.
Well, Mr. Davis pointed out that I needed to bring cookies because I'm usually right around Amy Orndorff's. So, um, here we go. Boy, did I smoke it too.
Oh my, oh my goodness.
How about that?
We know you, we know you had a chef at the house, would you have a baker also?
Yeah.
And I will leave you the extras of these two. Take me one again?
Yeah.
Probably one for Doug, one for Jim.
Thank you.
You're welcome. One for my friends, you guys over there. How's everyone today? I will be really brief because as you pointed out, we're behind schedule. So being brief is good. Um, so I come before you today. Um, I am Maria Lawrenson, Development Director at Hospice and Panhandle and we have a funding request for you all. Um, and I would, uh, point out to you that it's a little bit different this year. So instead of the general operational funds that we usually come to you before, we actually started a new program in March of 2021 called Panhandle Palliative Services. And it is a program to help people with serious illness, but not in the last six months of, as hospice normally is. So this is for people with chronic illnesses, um, who have struggled, who might have multiple diagnoses. Um, back in March of 2021, we hired a full-time nurse practitioner who actually, much like the, um, the hospice nurses, actually visits patients in their homes um, and can help with a whole array of things, really managing medications, um, working with their, uh, regular physicians. So these are people who are, are still very seriously ill, but not ready for a hospice program. We recognize, believe it or not, that there are people who, um, kind of fall through the cracks somewhere in between sort of the home health area and the hospice area. And, um, this is a, again, an in-home program where someone will visit, um, you in your home um, and just sort of assess your situation, work with your physician and, um, and try and get your pain, your medicines, all of those things under control. Um, you know, why would we start a program in March of 2021 in the height of the pandemic? Because we thought it was so needed. Um, we began by, uh, reaching out to, uh, pulmonary patients, so like COPD folks, people who struggle with breathing issues and cardiac patients. We thought we were gonna be overwhelmed. We were not. Um, I think it had a lot to do with the timing of when we were trying to roll out a whole new program. Um, so then in the fall, we opened Panhandle Palliative Services to all diagnoses. So in 2021, beginning obviously in March, so we haven't been at this a whole year yet, um, we've cared for almost a hundred patients. We are also only doing this program in Berkeley and Jefferson Counties right now because we have one nurse practitioner and if he were traveling, I mean, he could spend his whole time on the road if we, if we opened it all the way up. So, um, so Berkeley, Jefferson Counties, we've taken care of, like I said, close to a hundred patient, a hundred patients and we cover all diagnoses. And even with starting in March of 2021, those patients received thirteen hundred days of care, which is pretty amazing, um, I think. So, um, our nurse practitioner was a former hospitalist at Berkeley Medical Center and he is hustling, he likes to be busy, he likes to see lots of patients, um, and, and really help out. So, um, great guy, Steve Johnson is his name. Um, he actually had a column in the paper yesterday, um, on the, um, on the health page, which is always interesting, they put us on the health page. It also said that he was the Reverend Warren Watts, which he is not, obviously, but it's not worth asking for a correction, as you all can imagine, so, um, uh, but he's doing really well. He shared some incredible stories. Um, one actually he outlined in the article yesterday. So there was a woman who had been discharged from Berkeley Medical Center and she was on a diuretic to, um, well, you can have an idea what diuretics do. Um, anyway, her, uh, her PCP, her regular physician had prescribed a diuretic and then the hospitalist in the hospital provide, asked for a diuretic. And then as she was being discharged, they prescribed another diuretic. So she gets home and she's like, oh my gosh, I'm taking these three different diuretics. And, and Dr. Steve gets in there and he's like, oof, nobody told you to stop the first two. You really should just be on this one. So sometimes it's just that simple. And she called like two days after his visit and said, I can't believe how good I feel after this. So sometimes it's just that simple. So we're excited, we think that we have the ability to serve a lot more patients in 2022 and beyond and then expand, um, to the other counties that we serve. So it's a, it's a real good program. The initial funding actually came from an estate gift that we received the previous year because unlike hospice services, um, palliative care does not have the same sort of reimbursement stream from Medicare and Medicaid. So it's kind of a self-funded sort of thing, so we're keeping our.
How big can this program get?
Oh, it can get, it can get huge. We're gonna have to hire more people, of course, Mr. Barnhart, in order to do that. But we think that we can be at the point. But we think that we can be at the point where we're serving certainly as many, um, palliative patients as we are hospice patients. And by the way, we're at about 200 hospice patients today. Our numbers have, as you might imagine, have really grown, especially in the last month.
Does this interfere with Panhandle Home Health?
Um, it is not Panhandle Home Health, um, but a person can have palliative care through Panhandle Palliative Services as well as Panhandle Home Health. So you can have two programs simultaneously. That's the other difference, um, primarily with palliative care. All palliative care, well, all hospice care is palliative, but not all palliative care is hospice, if that makes sense. Because in hospice, we sort of ask people to reconsider goals and, um, and sort of the whole aggressive treatment. During palliative care, you can have the comfort-oriented care that hospice is so, um, so good at providing, but also can be undergoing very aggressive treatment. So we're serving cancer patients who are still receiving chemo, um, you know, people who have, um, pacemakers, defibrillators, all that kind of thing. You can do it all with this program. So we're excited about the the possibilities for it, and we recognize the great need. Mr. Gokunower will remember a couple of years ago, um, I actually came out and met with him, and we talked about the the possibility and and where do we find patients? And we've still been able to work with, um, our area EMTs and the ERs and people who are sort of frequent flyers in the emergency room who keep showing up, showing up, because that's another goal. People don't want to go to the hospital. Sorry. Um, but they generally want to stay at home. So that's a another goal that we can that we can use, um, that we can help people achieve here. So...
I think we're seeing more of that today than we've ever seen.
Absolutely.
You know, with the with the the pandemic, COVID, all of that going on.
Yeah.
For the past couple of years, dealing with that.
I had a, uh, a friend who unfortunately, um, passed away, but was in the ER down in the city for about 15 hours before they found him a room. Um, and he was there, you know, they were out in the corridors, and it's just, yeah, we need to take care of people at home. So...
I would think that a program like this would, uh, improve the quality of life for that person and give and give them a a better living prior to entering into...
It really does. It really does, Mr. Gokunower.
And so they would extend their time in their home.
It sure does. It sure does. And the other thing that we found, we knew this would be a side effect, side benefit, because, you know, our nurse practitioner is working out of our hospice offices. We know that it is still really difficult for people to say the H-word and sign on to the H-program. But sometimes we can see a patient who is reluctant, who clearly down the pike is gonna is gonna become a hospice patient at some point, but because he's had this care already sort of under the umbrella, he's much more, he or she are much more likely to sign on. Because that's one of our biggest struggles in hospice is, you know, I'll tell you this, people don't want to sign up because you die in three days, which isn't not the case, obviously, but that's what the mindset is. I've been there for 13 years now, and that's what I hear today, just like I heard 13 years ago. So we think that this is a program that can do lots of things, absolutely improve the quality of life for people. I mean, this poor lady, who was on three diuretics, um, you know, is just feeling so much better now, but it also makes people comfortable when it's time to pass onto into another program.
So what does it what it so what does it take to what does it take to start up the thing? Does he, does he drive a company vehicle? Does he?
He drives his own vehicle. It's a it's a Ram truck. So, um, and he makes house visits. We have a person who's really dedicated to his schedule, which is the other thing we thought, after I visited with Mr. Gokunower and we sort of put all the paperwork and let everybody, all the providers, all the docs in the community know that we were doing this, we thought our phone would be ringing off the hook, not so much. So we've told people, anybody can call. Anybody can call and make a referral here, um, to do that. So he's driving all over, you know, from Harper's Ferry to Glengarry to, um, you know, but again, because patients, he can get them sort of managed pretty quickly, the the caseload or the visit number is not going to be the same as with a hospice patient. So that's how that kind of works.
So is that is that, uh, is that service normally done with somebody using their own vehicle like that? Or that having, I guess, you pay any mileage or something?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And he is a full-time employee of Panhandle Palliative Services, but under the hospice of the Panhandle umbrella. So, I mean, he we pay him a nurse practitioner salary as well as mileage to travel from home to home to home, um, if he needs to, you know, to commiserate with the the patient's providers, like if he needs to call Ryan McCarthy or go see him or something like that, he'll he'll do those kinds of things, too. But the the medical community is now embracing a little bit more. We're really trying to put the word out. Um, we have a whole set of, um, of community engagements that we're going to get to go and speak about it. You all are first, so, um, but we're going to head the whole rotary chamber, um, kind of thing, because, you know, people don't know about it. So that's what we're trying to do.
Didn't have any idea.
I know. I know. Like I said, it was a quiet it was a quiet opening, Dan. So...
So, uh, so so what else is new with hospice?
So, I mean, like I said, we're we're happily, but sadly, very busy. Um, you know, we are, um, you know, 200 patients that we probably the average daily census in 2020 was around 180 to 185, so we're up around 200, which is a lot for us. Um, but, um, you know, but managing, um, it's it's always a stretch. Um, we had one week where we, oh, we tested, so we have 145 staff. We tested 51 for COVID, um, in one week. I'm sure you're doing that here. Um, and I want to say 18 were positive in that week. Um, not all nurses and aides, a lot of administrative staff and everything, um, but we managed to be able to, um, you know, to still to still get the work done. And we're moving forward with the fundraisers that we have as usual. Um, so we're looking forward to to 2022.
So how else has COVID affected you guys? Has there been additional additional costs that you...
Right, right. Well, and like so many folks, we did receive PPP, um, uh, funding during 2020, 2021. So that was very helpful in order to just get the the equipment, um, to be able to keep, um, you know, the primary care provider safe. Um, so there, you know, there's that. We've actually taken a a section of our inpatient facility and just made it, so there are seven rooms on one end, seven on the other end, and the last three to four rooms on one end, we've designated as COVID rooms, um, so that then we bring the ambulance service in one way, um, you know, so that we can that we can keep people separated. It's been a challenge. In fact, I looked out my window the other day, and I'm like, the ambulance knows where to drop off patients, because we have a designated garage in the back, and I'm like, oh, it's a COVID patient, and they're trying to take them in and keep everyone, um, keep everyone safe and and secure.
So has it has it cost you additional funds that you guys weren't able to recover?
Um, with the with the the government funds that we were able to receive, the federal government funds, we were able to to manage to hold the line there. So it's been, um, while it's been a challenge, and of course, in the beginning, beginning was very challenging because we weren't even sure we could get the supplies that we needed, you know, when we were face masks and shields and, um, pappers that, I mean, when, well, you all have seen the pictures of when someone goes into a COVID-positive patient's room. I mean, we dawn all of that, and then you have to take it all off and and start again the next time you go in. So, anyway. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
I always appreciate, um, getting the opportunity at least to come and say hey and...
We appreciate you giving us...
Well, like I said, I'm not to be outdone by Amy Orndorff, so...
I may even stay awake for the entire session.
Okay, there you go.
It's not guaranteed.
Maybe.
And those are pretty good cookies, too, from what I understand. So take them back, Penny, and you know where to take the platter. Okay. And all the goodies you can pass along. So in the little packets, you have all kinds of goodies. You have a pen, you have a flashlight, a really skinny flashlight and all kinds, yeah, look at that. Magnets, there are all kinds of things in there. So, I know, right? Chachkies.
Well, we could use one. We should just keep it here. We've had, you know, in the last month or so, we've had a couple of power outage.
I know, I know. That's crazy, huh? Just hold your flashlight on. There you go. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Maria, it's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Well, we're still behind. But Maria was quick. Looks like, uh, Jennifer Schwisher is our next up in Berkeley County Emergency Ambulance Communication.
This is a little different than you typically would get. Um, as you know, other than other than $300,000 that we give for non-emergency, uh, expenses, our 911 center is self-supporting. Typically, you are not presented with a, uh, a budget request, but because it is taxpayer's money, um, it is, you know, supported through 911 fees. Um, we thought it was appropriate for you to at least know where that funding is going. So I would just kind of give you a broad brush review of it, and more than anything else, just kind of let you know some of the activities that are going on down there.
Good afternoon, Tom.
We're doing good.
Thank you. I don't have any cookies, so it's not going to be hard. No, I don't need any either. Thank you. Um, so as Alan said, um, working on the budget, um, we've been able to this past year go through and see where our funding should be more directed in a in a better way and a better utilization. Uh, we've been able to save some money over the past year. Um, one of the things that we were able to save was in our training area. Every two years, we were re-certifying in a very basic course for telecommunicators. We've switched to another course curriculum, which saves us $25 per person for the two years. So we're not spending, although it's not much, it's still something that we were able to redirect and spend our training money, uh, a little bit more wisely. Um, with communications, we are ever-evolving into more technologies, and with more technologies, it's it's more expensive. That's where we find, um, beyond our personnel monies, we're spending, uh, a lot of our monies in new technologies and trying to keep up with, um, with the the things that are going to be coming available to the next generation, 911. Um, one of those things, which we're actually having a kickoff meeting for tomorrow, is we are going to be using artificial intelligence for evaluating all of our medical calls, and the employees will get instantaneous feedback. We will be the second and the only United States that will be using this program. Uh, but we are going in that direction of AI being used, um, to help supplement because staffing is so difficult to find throughout, um, 911, that we have to find a way of being able to serve the citizen and being able to do it in a way where it's cost-effective as well. Um, so that is something new that we are are looking for in our technologies. Um, we also looked at our budget as far as, um, some of the the training costs. There was not as much in the training budget before, and I am a firm believer that in training, that's where our people will become better and that helps serve our citizens better. So you'll see a marked increase in that area. Um, but I'll get into some statistics and stuff. You guys can see the numbers. If you have any questions, I'll I'll be glad to answer them. Um, last year from 2020, uh, we had, um, a total of 53,558 calls. We've increased just over 3,000 calls, uh, this past year to 56,579. So we are still losing an increase in the number of generated calls, our actual phone calls into the center. They only increased about 1,000, 1,500. So, um, but we are seeing an increase overall. I think actually it's probably a little bit lower because of COVID. Um, I think that if we were in back two years ago, we would see that number even a little bit higher because people would be out a little bit more. We also have looked at, um, this past year, you guys approved, uh, for us to have a quality assurance department. Uh, with hiring them, we were, we are now saving per student because of our two, um, staff members. We are saving on the initial, I guess, certification, $100 per for class. So since April, we saved around $2,500, just because we have the one staff. And we also do not have to pay for training that they can provide that we would initially have to pay $1,500 a class for. So we are, we are looking at avenues of hiring people that can be in the place that they can also do dual roles. They can do the quality assurance by CalSO Act as instructors. So that is saving us a long time. We are also using, um, the provider that we used as priority dispatch for our training. Um, we found that we were not utilizing, um, three days a year that we could use for training from the company, not from our quality insurance instructors, that these were not being utilized. So we are saving, again, it's $1,500 a class, so we get three of those a year. So we have, last year, they gave me the one for 2020, and I got to use 2022. So there, you know, I've saved $6,000 of training calls. So we are looking at ways and, um, trying to improve our, um, staff. Some other things that we were able to do is we went away from, we were still utilizing the paper scheduling system, whereas we had bought a scheduling software, but we weren't utilizing it to its capacity. They're now 100% overusing that scheduling software, which is saving a lot of time and energy of the staff where they could be devoted to something else. We switched to a 10-hour schedule in September. Unfortunately, COVID, um, back at the beginning of this month, pushed us to a 12-hour schedule, uh, but we are coming off of that after this week. The 10-hour schedule, um, during the couple of months that we were on it, we found that it saved us money in overtime because we're not having some calls off, we're not usually having to fill that shift. So that has been able to to help us as well. Something else that we have done with the schedule that has helped the employees, this is more of a morale type of thing, is we're not switching our schedule every two months with like a two-week notice of switching. We are on a one-year rotation. So every employee knows what they're going to be working for the next year, which is, again, been a morale booster, people that they can schedule vacations, those types of things. Um, staffing-wise, um, we hired 11 entry-level employees this past year. We have retained eight of them. Overall, we lost six employees. Four of them were in train, or four of the six were in training. One was a part-time employee, and one was an administrative employee. Uh, we are currently down eight full-time entry-level positions. We are testing actually today, um, and for the next three weeks, we are testing and learning our next accounting that we got our great end of the April. We also changed our certification dates. Uh, we were finding that, um, in a month, we could have four or five people that need to re-certify, and they were getting missed. So then we would have to, if they were getting missed, we were having to pay for the full certification effort, and that's very, now, $400 a student. And so we were having to pay, you know, $1,200 for someone because their certification was overlooked. We have, um, moved all their certification dates to the same date for everybody every year, and every other year will pay for half the staff. So that has helped us, savings and also... and also has helped Paula a lot be able to manage that system. We worked a lot on building bridges this year with our allied agencies. This has allowed us for additional training opportunities. Again, pre-training from Sheriff's Department, Berkeley Fire, from Bay Area Police Department. I'm sorry. Bay Area Police Department. So again, pre-training for us, which has saved us money. So we're, we're pretty proud of that. Our training program has really been built up with the help of Paula. She's really spearheaded that. So that's really been great for us.
So the contractual services is, obviously there's line items that weren't in there last year. What's, what's that?
Well, we've never really, we've never had a formal budget.
So the contractual services, that includes the quality, one of the quality assurance people.
Right.
Which, so that is for her. It also includes some of the benefits of using like the IT department.
We actually, unlike some of our other departments, as you know, we, we have a triple net lease with Central. They pay us three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for their lease. And then they also reimburse the IT department for services provided to them. In the past, they weren't even in the system as a budget. So if you looked at nineteen A's budget, say, you know, April or May, it was nothing but a, a negative number. It, it looked like that they were running a two or three million dollar deficit because it was never being tracked. Well, since Jen's come on board, we're, we're changing that so we can actually track expenses. So this is really the first full year that we'll be, that we'll be truly treating our emergency communications center as a call center.
So some of the numbers, probably as we move into this and have more, the numbers are more, I think that's where we're supposed to be, I guess. Is this, is that why? Say, we're, we're going to get better at it. So some of these numbers, next year it'll, it'll even be better, be more precise.
And under the new MUNIS software system, it will allow us to do a better job of this.
Well, and, and some of the things I'm, I'm looking at, I'm, I know there was money spent in, but it's not in the last year.
It's not. So, like I said, this is, this is a new, this is, this is new for our, our emergency communications center. But as the, the body that's responsible at the end of the day for tax dollars, we follow the court that you know what's being spent. Okay. One, one real quick thing. You want to just real mention, just real quickly, the accreditation.
The accreditation. So we are working towards accreditation. That is in all three of our dispatch disciplines. That would be emergency, police fire and medical dispatch. Again, we want to kind of spearhead it with the best in West Virginia. And we will be the first in the state of West Virginia to move a team try accreditation. We expect this will be done in the last, or the second quarter of the next fiscal year. So probably November is what I'm thinking is when we'll receive our accreditation. This makes it secretly means we're going to be the best of the best. We came in and started the QA program in April. Last month was the first month we met accreditation levels. You have to do that for six months in order to apply for this. So we were really happy to last, this, you know, past December, we were at our accreditation level. They have to maintain that for six months. We will apply for it. It's, it's super exciting for us, for my staff. They really have bought into it. And the good part about accreditation is, is Paul and I were talking about this this morning. Everybody's going to get the same care. Let's make sure that we're all, all of our call takers are asking the same questions of everybody. Doesn't matter who you are. And when I came, that wasn't being done. And so it also is, you know, good for risk management. We want to make sure that if something happens, that we have all the documentation, that we've done everything, I bless you, that we've done everything that we should be doing. And it's, it's amazing. Alan has some of our, our stats. I've given them and it's amazing how much, how much they've improved. It's been a lot of work by a lot of people.
That's a real high
I bless you.
For, for them to be able to take that discount is going to be a kind of a big deal.
Yes.
And like she said, it will be the only center in the state that has that accreditation.
Well, that's not surprising. Not surprising at all. I mean, I, I think you've been doing a great job since you came on board. And I, I don't, I don't think anybody's, anybody's had any issues with the progress that you're making, that's for sure. I don't know about this artificial intelligence stuff.
I know. It's a little scary. I know, I know it's a
I got no idea.
He's still trying to figure out his flashlight.
He's still amazed at the flashlight.
How it works. What is battery?
One other thing that Jen has, has implemented that has been, it, it's not surprising, but one of the things that she did early on was implement a process of random drug testing for all of the dispatchers. And not that we expected any problems, but it's, it all goes to that level of, you know, you know, quality assurance. You want to make sure that when you call in, that your first line of defense, your, your first emergency responder is, is of sound mind. So not only do we do random drug testing every month, but as part of the, the screening process, one of the things that she's implemented is a psychiatric evaluation that goes along with the, the audiogram that's we have and some other things. So continues to raise that, that standard for our employees, which, which I think this is truly committed.
Good. Any questions?
I have, I have a couple.
Sure.
I'm, I'm assuming that you're showing like for maintenance repair of equipment, five hundred and fifty thousand. That's, that's already coming out of your budget now, correctly? Yes.
Around, that, that is the, with a little bit of an increase for this year just because we got it, the, the gym.
But those, I guess what I'm getting at is even, even down below buildings and equipment rents, that you're just showing us where, where your dollars are currently going, right? Okay.
It's being spent now. It's never been documented.
Right, right. I just, I'm just saying, it's, it's in print now.
Yes, sir.
You can see where the dollars are going. Supplies, materials.
So that is probably one that will change a little bit. Alan and I have worked on that a couple of weeks ago. It's just some questions of what items need to go into that. So I think that's going to reduce down and that number probably will go into, more into, I'm sorry, professional services. Like the AI went into that and that was about fifteen thousand dollars. So that, that needs to be, and again, some of this is a learning curve for me and just because some of it, it just went down. So it was a documented, previous urgency to make sure, which, which line item?
And the other problem that we're having is we go through the chart of accounts that's provided by the state auditor's office. We just had a conference call last week with the state auditor's office. We're doing some things in Berkeley County that's not done anywhere else in the state. So we're trying to get some direction from them where these expenses should belong and they don't have. So we're, we're kind of making up things as, as we go, particularly as Jen and I sat down two weeks ago and threw the chart of accounts. And some of these, these things, we weren't exactly sure where, where they needed to be. So we'll continue to refine to that.
How much do we get in for nine hundred and fifty?
Yeah, it's three point four, three point five million.
Is it consistent year to year?
Yes, it actually continues to increase.
Really?
Yeah. We just saw an increase this past year, which we need because it's just going to keep, this will be one of those areas of all emergency services that will be increased. It's going to be there and the cost will keep going up.
And we're very fortunate that we have the level of expertise that we have in our IT department. So that, you know, we're not contracting a lot of, you know, look, we're not contracting a lot of things out. For example, when we had that power surge last Thursday, which was a real reason of concern for us, we had our IT department, I mean, the first thing they focused on was emergency communications to make sure that, you know, the lapse that we had wasn't going to be prolonged lapse.
It really sustained the damages that
The center itself, the electronics in the center itself did not, but as we depend more and more on electronic locks and things like that, for example, our DRC, brand new DRC sustained about ten thousand dollars just in the electronic locks worth of damage. The, the air panels on the roof of the judicial center have a brand new chiller out back to the basement.
Hundred and fifty bucks a seat.
So.
Really? Now, is there any way in the future that you can lessen surge protectors and all that kind of stuff?
I already have it. It's good.
It's time to upgrade to another level of not existing yet. Artificial intelligence.
So we're, we're tracking all of our expenses, time and material both. We've opened a claim with the risk pool just to cover ourselves, but Anthony has been working with the contractor that, that shaped it, the problem. And we've, we've got it covered, but it's, it's caused us a lot of headaches.
We're submitting a claim for General Insurance. I don't know who else is going to be submitting claims.
Okay, I guess, I guess we're, I guess we're educated enough on what's going on. So appreciate all the information.
Thank you all. Very nice. Thank you.
She and Paula and their staff do a, just a, except for
Does Paula have anything to say?
Other than, you know, it's been, you know, Jen's one of the, you know, I don't know how to put it, you know, making relationship, you know, it's, it's bringing home knowledge and that is one knowledge to bring together, things that you know that I've known for years, but you might be kind of cheap to do.
Good.
Surrounding yourself like a huge one, Paul, certainly in there, and helping out of people. I mean, everyone's work, Thursday was a really good example, to be honest with you, about all the county departments worked really well together in an emergency situation. And it was amazing, you know, people just were coming out and would work and, you know, we, we were able to, because OEM had smoke in the building. So we're in the middle of, okay, now we're going to need to evacuate and IT has come in earlier and Jack and his team, whatever. It was amazing. It really looked out for what could have turned out to be an accident situation. So, great, yeah. It's great to work with such a county that works so well together. So I appreciate. The past year, a little bit of a reminder of the benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Before we get farther behind Floyd, you're up next, but it's all good.
First Floyd, fourth.
Thanks. I'd take one later. I'd just like to say a couple of things. Hopefully you had the handouts that we, or material we sent in regarding the Conservation District. Just a couple of things that are not on there. I'll try to make them very brief and try to answer any questions you may have. But the Conservation District has been around eighty-plus years. It was actually, by knowledge, an East companion was started in nineteen thirty-nine. So it's, has a long history.
Is that when you were elected supervisor?
I think it may have been. I don't know during the second. No, but, but basically, the thing about the Conservation District, nine out of ten people wouldn't even know that we're here or maybe more than that, or have no idea what to do. But what they do really is a basically, you don't see much of what they do. It's, it's very subtle, but over the years, I think there's been quite a few changes. In my opinion, it still has the, the same goals that it had in the nineteen forties, say, and, but a different way of getting to it. And really the goal, one of the primary goals is try to reduce soil erosion, which it used to be, you could see a field and next thing you know, you'd be right down the road, look at it and they had plowed it and there's a three-foot ditch there and water out the roadway, mud and so forth. So it's a whole different approach. I think that has improved quite a bit. But I'll just go with a few things here that, that I wanted to mention that may not be in the material we sent to you and then try to answer any questions. One thing is, we don't have an outreach specialist right at this time. We've only had, we had one and we've had her for like ten years, but she's found another job really with the conservation agency on the state level. But we do need to get an employee. I just wanted to mention that we say we have one, but we do not have one right at this time. We are looking for one. We continue to get state and federal funding to help Berkeley County landowner implement best management practices. And really that's to protect our soils and water and the air. So that, that's goals the same, has been, even though the, the approach is somewhat different, but that's our goal. So far, we've been able to meet the state and federal requirements for the Chesapeake Bay drainage area, which has continued, the bar has continued to be raised each year. And it's been, I guess it started in about two thousand eight, two thousand ten, and it's supposed to have a certain bar that we need to reach for twenty twenty-five. So far each year, we've been able to stay ahead of that. I don't know what the repercussions would be, but I'm sure it's not anything we look forward to as an individual or as a county if we do get behind and they say we're not, that we're continuing to put too many pollutants in the Chesapeake Bay area. Something else I wanted to mention, the Back Creek Protection Plan, it's in here. And of course, I live in Back Creek, that has nothing to do with it. It's one of the unusual streams that is not impacted as far as pollution goes. It's, it's not on any list that needs to get cleaned up and we're working to try to stay ahead. And along with that, we have two projects we're working on now that should be completed, I'm going to say by midsummer, that will help with stream bank erosion on two places in Back Creek. And then we're also working with Foreland Protection Board with an eas, with a grant that we got from the state level to put an easement on additional hundred acres that would be co-held with the Foreland Protection Board, which again, to keep any development or stream bank erosion, to try to protect the stream and keep it clean. And I just wanted to mention the, the maintenance that you all do on the Pike Side Channel, which we, we'll do that each year, once a year for an inspection with no other calls. But basically the mowing and debris that needs to be cleaned up and anything else that needs to take care of, you all have done a very good job on that. And that serves the benefit of everybody. I mean, anytime you stay up to or keep ahead on something like that. Also, I would like to thank you for the time to make this request for the Conservation District and for the past support that we've received over the years. It's something that has been cultivated somewhat and I'm going to say the last several years have continued to improve and so forth. And I think that's something that I would like to thank you guys for and you guys, ladies who may be, that's involved in any of those decisions. You have quite a job to do behind, under county. And something else I wanted to mention that Jen touched on a while ago, I've been a conservation supervisor for several years, but I did not file for reelection this year. And basically my time will end in June. Just for matter of information, not because anything's going to change, but just saying that I won't be there, but I, I'm sure that the people that's there and the work that's being done will continue on without any problems. It's just, I guess you just need to know when to say when. And it's, I don't have any health issues. I don't have any complaints, rights, whatever else. Sometimes you just need to say, you know, I'm out, I'm going to step back and see what else comes up. But that's just matter of information on that. But I do appreciate your support and I would try to answer any questions. I made it kind of quick here and I know you all have a lot to do, but I would try to answer any questions, any comments you may have.
What's this well-water testing program?
Well, that Well, that was my thought to have it added, only because it's an issue taking place in different places, like, I'll give you an example, a place in Pennsylvania, they've set up a program within the county, so to speak, that we will pay for doing 50 well water tests to see what your well water is like, it's not, it's just something I thought that with, with what's going on in our county, I'm just saying, you know, we face a changing landscape, I would never have thought two years ago, for example, that Big Springs out there where it had an issue, you think, well, everything's fine, but, but basically, it would just have been something that possibly the district and/or the conservation agency, maybe some state funds, maybe county funds or what, to do some well water testing, whether we pay half on it, for so many people, but it, but it's not a, I mean, it's just.
Well, there's, you can either test bacteriologically, or you can test chemically. When you get into testing chemically, it gets to be a problem, because you don't know what you're testing for. Bacterially, the state health department runs a bacterial lab out of Carnage City, out of the state health department, the health department, for, you know, it's a health department function, you could work with the health department on that respect, bacteriologically. Chemically, you're kind of on your own.
Yeah, I, I think from the county standpoint, if I understand correctly, I can see if I get my water test for somewhere between $70 and $100, and usually, I don't know why it is, but if you're paying me half of it, pay half of my cost, I'll get it tested, I'm not going to pay it myself, I don't, it's just kind of a psychological thing, but, that would be the only thing would be, would be, that whether it could be anything set up for, but again, that's even one of the minutes, I'm not going to be here to find if there was anything, but I think that's something to look at, I guess more so than saying that down the road, we have some people that have major health issues, and I'll say, when you have your water test, well, I've never had it tested, it's just kind of, sometimes you throw something out, that might be something I might want to think about.
Well, and it can also be tested for radar, but that's a totally separate process.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's something to think about, if you go and do it bacteriologically, you know, it's already, the service is already there, it's just a matter of coordinating it with the health department, probably, yeah, I'm just, you know.
Yeah, I think.
How it works.
If, if, if the health department, the county council, the conservation district, and these people, and these, anytime we can all kind of work together, certainly better than me trying to go in one direction, and somebody else going in another direction, and say, well, I didn't know you all were even doing that, so, that, that is just something that I think we always kind of need to keep our eyes open, just, just an example, and this is a major jump, but something that irritates me, the amount of the trees are dying, you look any place, I know it's a major jump, but trees are dying, it's not just the Emerald Ashmore, or something like that, normally what you think's a good healthy tree today, and I talk to different people about that, and they're saying, you know, I haven't noticed that, I thought, well, just open your eyes up.
Well, you can't help it, no, there's.
But I'm just saying, that's a major jump, but it's things like that, that eventually, you know, one tree dies, you don't know, ten trees die, that whole mountain size did, and, oh, well, why didn't somebody say something, so that, that's kind of where this was a wonder, nothing, no hidden agenda or anything, but just something we need to think about, I think, from the water testing.
So, Mr. Currie, the, the increase in requests from 2,500 last year to 5,000 this year, those, those monies you're looking at to be able to expand this well testing program?
Well, no, actually, I believe we requested 5,000 last year and received 2,500.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, the, the request amount's the same, and I will say this again, anybody knows, I'd be, that's truthful and very upfront and honest, it's not like, well, if we get this fund, we're going to do this, we've been very fortunate in working with you guys, we say we have several things that are going on, and we don't say, we need $1,784 to do well water testing, and that's what it's going to be for, the funds have went to us, and we tried to use them, whether it be to help with education outreach, and specialists to do a program in school or something, so we really have him pointed down on that, but basically, to my knowledge, the spring insurance has been 5,000.
All right, thank you.
So, so to start with, I want to thank you for all your years of service, you know, it's, I, I don't know what you're going to do with all your spare time, but you, you spend, you spend a lot of time involved in, in doing what you do, and it's, it is much appreciated by the community.
It's, any of us, I know any of you guys do, you have plenty to do, it's just a question of picking and choosing what I'm going to focus on today, and then tomorrow, it's going to be something different, and, and, you know, thank you for, for what you all do, and each one of us, if we could just do a little bit, it makes the whole place a little better.
That's right. It, it surely does, has the, has the COVID affected you guys any, in any of your operations, things you got to do differently now?
Well, yes and no, our office hasn't been open as much as I'd like for it to be, and I'm not, I know, you know, with the COVID, how's the best way to handle it, but we've, we've worked with individuals setting up an appointment, in other words, used to be, you know, you have three people minutes that are in the office, and we'll take care of you, and then the next person, but now, it's a little more structured, which makes everybody happy, you know, it's kind of like when you used to go to the barber and get a haircut, just stand and get your hair, now, if you need to be there at 3:15, and you're out at 3:30, but, but, yeah, the only thing is, it's been a, a little bit of a, I'm going to say an inconvenience on the farmer's part, because, actually, I was supposed to be in there Thursday morning at 8 o'clock, and that would have been the very time I shouldn't have been out mowing hay, because the ground was dry, you know, that type of thing, so, they, they would prefer to come at, at their convenience, but, but it, it has worked out and continues to work out, and I think everything that's operated is just a little different format than what, what it was, but we've continued to have people sign up, right now, we have somewhere between 900 and 1,000 cooperators in the Eastern Panhandle, and that's a, a cooperator, somebody that participates in any one of our programs, whether it be a cover crop, the lime park, or whatever else, or building fences to protect the screen, but we have at this time about close to 1,000 people, the families are participating.
Have you guys had regular interaction with the stormwater board?
No, we haven't, and that's something that really should be looked at, again, I think we're getting more complicated as a county, so we do need to kind of get shoulder to shoulder with people instead of one person, one, one group in one direction, but no, I think that's something that, that should really be pursued.
We, we had a comment, I, I'm pretty sure last year and the year before, about some of the things that you, that the conservation district does, could actually be, be seen as credits for the stormwater board, to be able to use for meeting, meeting criteria from the EPA.
Yeah, and, sure, that falls in line with the Chesapeake Bay drainage area, where from that, we're focusing, from our information, on the agricultural side of it, but to me, you know, pollution is pollution, how do you want to look at it, whether it comes from off my yard, or whether, you know, it comes out of the field somewhere, so, I, I think that's something that, it would be worth, I think, an effort to try to get, you know, more people look at the same project, or same type of thing at the same time, because everybody's going to know.
Something you can leave on the memo pad for the next guy, right?
Yeah, yeah, but I just think it's something for two, I mean, that's what you said, I didn't want it to sound like, well, I'm not going to be here, so I'm not worried about anything, I think, it's one of those things, it's kind of like, it's halftime now, it's like half, getting ready to start, and the game's not over, but we need to pick it up and go with it.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else? Thank you, Floyd.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Well, Mark, I see you sitting in the back, back there, you ready to come on?
All good.
Okay, we're running a little behind.
As you know, we do nothing, Kelly does not, we don't need general fund money into CBB, however, you are required by law to provide half the hotel motel tax to the CBB, and they usually use this as an opportunity just to bring the council up to speed on, you know, some of the activities, successes for the past year, and some of the things they're looking at for the coming year.
I, I got a little bit of idea what they do, but, go ahead, Mark.
Well, I do too.
Do it.
I used to be a member of the CBB. Eddie will be, actually, I will be enlightened this afternoon.
Well, I'll do my best, so, thank you. Mark Jordan with Martinsburg Berkeley County Commission, busy to be here, pleasure to be here, and always, as always, we're not here to ask for money, we're just updating what you said. We've actually had a busy year this year, this is our second busiest year since I have been here, which started in 2014, and people are coming out here to be working seriously, as you know, the rise in hotel motel tax, and we're almost back to normal, that's according to some hoteliers I've been talking to, as well as, so if you notice on the budget, I popped it back up to what it was, pre-print, pre-pandemic, because I feel pretty certain that it will be, and we're on track for, for actually going over the budget that I brought to you last week, which is good, and we have continued to partner with our local regional partners, Jefferson County, Fort Worth County, local people here, National Martin, TDCs, nonprofits, as well, we are partnering with, let's begin with the state prison office, and take advantage of some of their advertising cost cuts, further reach, like I mentioned every time, further reaching, so we've been doing some billboards last year, we're going to do it this year, it was, it was pretty popular, and people love it some, and primarily focusing on the building of the G M D C, down into Charlotte, North Carolina, which is a further sweep so far, haven't been out there yet, but according to tourism numbers, people are coming here, coming to Carolines, and so, trying to, we are up for accreditation this year, we, up until this past year, it wasn't mandated by the state, but as you may have been able to know, it is now mandated by the state, and all CDBs must be accredited when they do receive hotel motel tax, and so, for us, it's every, it's every three years, we've done it, we've been successful in it.
Accredited through who?
Accredited through the Western Association of CBBs.
And what does that involve?
That involves us coming for you, providing all of our financial information, we have to adhere to the guidelines of at least 40% marketing and advertising, 40% payroll for the hotel tax, and 20% admin costs, and they look at our budget to make sure we follow it, we send our information to our tax auditors, state tax auditors, Western Association of CBBs, and there's also going to be a contingency of different people from the state level looking at our folks, where there hasn't been in the past, which is why we're all involved, and we get audited every year, and, so, you know, that's what we have coming up, we should be accredited, hopefully, I believe we start if our numbers fall in August, and then beginning this August, we have to submit all of our financial information to the state for their auditors, again, it's the first time they've done it, which I think is needed for every CBB in the state, and verify that what they're doing, and we've got, and we've, we've helped with our taxes, we've helped through our grant position, your grant program, Roundhouse, Stevens House, Main Street Martinsburg, the Miss West Virginia organization, and we've helped some other, other entities in the area, one in particular that we want to meet you, the Miss West Virginia organization, they have, the reason we decided to partner with them is that they have a reach that is, we have, but they have more focused group, it's a national reach, in this area, and because of what they agreed to Martinsburg and Southern County, we decided we were good to partner, marketing models, and so, it's free of partnership with them, and coming to the table with great ideas, we're always interested in this, and to, other than partner with us, in Berkeley County, through that across the state, we can work in a mission. And another thing that we've been doing, I just spoke with the Roundhouse yesterday, they've come to us to try to get our, seek our help in finding businesses for the Roundhouse, and they're just coming up, and we agreed to lead us, and myself, and Susan, she's reached out to some of the local colleges to check, the history department, to see if there's somebody seeking internships that the Roundhouse can use, utilize, train during tours and season, which is basically made through, less than, so, but we're going strong. We began our next, we're going to implement another geocaching trail this year, we're still number one in the world for the geotour, we're still the top county in geocaching, another trail coming online, and so, we'll probably see another increase this year, not only from across the country, but from around the world, any questions?
So, so, I was just thinking about it, do you guys get involved any in, in like, like the city's working on some trails through Martinsburg, and the county's working on trying to get some trails out to, to connect to Route 9 Bike Path, you guys get involved in anything like that?
Well, what we do is, is we will certainly advertise that, as far as, as building it, we don't, and it's something that we've been working closely with Shane on, as far as building the city.
And I was thinking more like signage, those.
Oh, signage, sure, we can, we can definitely do that, especially.
Speaking of signs, what about Adam, Steven, Morgan, Morgan, all those counties?
That's the state, states, so, the state has removed some of the signs that I know of, as they were refurbished, I know one in particular, it's bringing capital, they've taken that sign and they're.
Well, I was thinking of a more interactive sign, you pull up to it, and your cell phone can talk to the person.
Powers that be.
Yeah, they were, they were talking about that.
Well, CBB was talking about that 10 years ago. I don't know if it's ever gone anywhere.
No, I'll look into it, that was, you know, pre-me, but I'll be happy to look into it, I know that through the AI, and the virtual technology that we have, easily possible, I know that the Stroll Society was looking into doing something like that to some of the museums, that you have, when you walk up, it pops up, it shows you what it used to be, and what it is now.
Well, Morgan, Morgan was in there earlier, and they were talking.
Well, and I, and, yeah, and I had said that I was good, that I directed, and I said, have you guys talked to the CBB about, about something like that, and they said, no, that they were talking to the state, and then Matt Olmstead said, no, I think it's the, the local CBB they've been talking to about, they're, they're trying to get some virtual sign where you pull up and, you know, get, get the information, I think it's on a speaker or something they want out there, something where you actually go up to the door, and it tells you all about the history of it or something.
Yeah, they haven't contacted us yet.
Right, but what on the trails, I was thinking more like signage, you know what I mean, if you're, if you're going down a trail, you really don't know what's, you know, two blocks over this way, or two blocks over that way, so I would think that, you know, signage on a trail, not that I'm a trail, yeah, I didn't go bike riding and all that, but I, if I was, I, I, you know, kind of like a road, and I'd like to know, you know, what's historical for me to veer off the trail and, you know, go over here to do something or look at something.
Sure, sure, that's.
Mark, the funds that you guys received through the hotel motel, is that, that's all self-reporting from them?
Yes.
So, so a guy or a girl goes in and pays cash, it's up to that operator whether they submit it or not, so there's.
And there's no auditing system?
That's what I was wondering, is there, there's no way to audit any of that, is there, so, truthfully, it's on your own, you're probably losing some money.
And it's going to get even stickier with Airbnb's now?
Yes.
Because it all falls back to the people who are actually renting, the hoteliers who are making, ultimately, it falls back to them, Airbnb's, the facilitators. Airbnb's, the facilitators are now responsible for the tax, and then dispersing it to the local.
Thank you. Can I just say? We've for the past one more, six, seven months, we see a pretty steady increase in the hotel motel tax since that summer.
Yeah.
Summer last year. And with all the construction that's going on, I ran down to see the new house that we just put contract on in Wood. And that new warehouse that's going on to the, to the east side of eleven there, I mean, all the construction and went home.
Good bit of equipment there.
Lot of equipment, yeah, I'd like to have the money that was invested in that equipment. But the other night, I went home down eleven because eighty-one was backed up and Leatherman's campground is completely packed. I mean, it's, it's full, they're clear up on the side, in a parking area that was never designated for, for RVs. So we know that, you know, certainly, construction drives hotel motel taxes. We saw it with, with B and G when they were constructing. So we've been tracking, and it's, it's been, it's pretty, pretty steady increase every month.
Yeah.
So with Mark presenting his projections, I think he's, he's, he's pretty close. He's, it looks good.
That's right. But, you know, it's Danielle on board. She's, she works with... So, and she said that same thing, a lot of projects going on, that's reading it, it helps pretty much. And, or she said because of COVID, it used to come. That hasn't come back, but I think as long as we continue to grow, have growth in the area.
She was talking like seventy percent is average right now. Yeah. So that's still, I mean, that's still a lot of room.
That is. It was, it was down low, twenty-five, and it's been up as high as about seventy-five, eighty percent in the good days, in the busy, without COVID, pre-COVID. So I think it's pretty good. People are coming.
Good. Yeah. Anything else?
Well, Mark?
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're up fifteen minutes.
You're up, Gary. Gary, you want a cookie?
No, thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. Has your hospice?
Yes, sir, good.
Like a lick.
Is there anybody?
Yeah. You got to go with Eric, handle him on your end.
Yeah, we're good.
My being a...
You give me a trouble.
They're delicious.
So, your wrist?
My wrist is first, first, so I live thirty-one years for it, but I'm going to do that and what's this, what's that? Ooh, that's impressive, huh? Which, which one's first? Budgets, I'm sorry.
Are you in therapy?
I am. Started yesterday. Was sore in the dickens last night.
Trying to get the range in it?
Mm-hmm. It was zero and eighteen percent, so zero and eighteen, out of the box, I think it's like twelve and twenty-three or something. Worked. Yeah. I'll thank you. I'll just touch on a couple highlights of what, I mean, I think you all know and I hope you hear that we're involved everywhere and continue to press forward on the IT side. I'm anxious to talk about the fleet stuff to tell you a little bit about what we did there, but some of the big things, obviously, you know, we've been working on the thirty-five new cruisers that we've invested in. Actually, thirty-three new cruisers and two non-police. We have ten left. We started in, I think, September, so we're going really good.
Delivery in August, so.
Yeah. So we started out fitting in September. We've got ten left, probably those will be done in the next three months.
Has the technology changed since you started?
Yes, it has.
I figured it was.
It has. We've learned a lot and enjoyed it, doing a great job. We haven't had any complaints, we've made mistakes, and the deputies have shown us, okay, listen, but it's worked out really well, so I'm proud of what they're doing. You all know, you see one of the new video walls here. Have you been in the center, seen that video wall? Down in the center, in nine one's pretty short. It's on the north wall, east corner. It's good. We programmed every subscriber unit radio in the county to the team, about fourteen hundred of them, so from the VA to every time farmer, EMS, I was deploying a new piece of software in the finance department.
Does any of that include the city of Martinsburg?
Does. We programmed both city fire and city police radios as well as city dispatch. We deployed a new piece of software that we wrote in the ambulance authority. It's going very well. Matter of fact, in my absence last week, they had a immediate personal appearance once they walked down there. So it went really well and took over, as you remember, you authorized us to take over the Berkeley Morgan Health Department. They used to have their support services with the state. Now, your team does it all in both counties, and they pay for the service. And I hope the bill or rapid asking, I think they're pretty satisfied, needing the new director. Took right off, so it's working really well. On the service side, just a note, as always, I broke it down by which departments we get to work for, but an interesting number, eight thousand five hundred and forty hours filled out for IT services. That's four people. And if you recall, we increased by one a level one staff in September.
Yes.
Maybe?
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned that, because when you look at his budget, I did fill in your, your spreadsheet that I do for you. That's reflected over ten percent, the admin, the administrative assistant position, and the additional tech that you authorize. So that is a true, a true call.
Yeah. In those, those billable hours, and I think Council President Kopey, last year, said you're billing those out, we deduct those from your salary. But, I mean, we're doing well. The numbers, if you add them together and divide, they equal two thousand and eighty real close to the amount of tax down there. So if I were in business and I looked at it, and I think I've said this before, on the other side of the shop, if we're looking to make money, if I could keep a technical person billable seventy percent of the time, I think my hand is twisted, we're a hundred percent of the time. So your staff works really hard. We try not to ask and have people sitting around waiting for work to come, but at the same time, we try and have enough that when the call comes, we're ready to do it. That balance, I think we're there. They're doing a great job, and I think to the satisfaction of all the customers. I try and keep tabs on all the department heads and outside agencies to have a good face as often as I can, and I really don't get any complaints. Folks that work on that ITT really work hard and do a good job, so I'm proud of them as well should you be. They really work hard and turned out.
I would think if we're going to have somebody keep good track of their time, it ought to be at least the IT or the accounting department.
They are.
Two, they ought, they ought to be tracking fairly well.
Right.
And the way Gary has set up their timekeeping has bled over into facilities that we got, we almost have to the point where all of our facilities workers were keeping track of workforce. For example, Winchester Environmental was at one twenty-sixth, it's three at eight o'clock to do the testing before, sorry to put that out forbid for demolition, we want to make sure that there's no, you know, hazardous materials. We opened a ticket, the ticket was assigned, just while I was sitting here this afternoon, got notification that, you know, Bubby Trinari met the guy from Winchester at eight o'clock, and it was closed down. So they're keeping track of all their time that way also now.
On the IT side, really the increases in the budget, the big number are the voting machines that, and the maintenance increase for those, or the lease maintenance, or the big numbers. The only real big chunk that I've asked extra for is in my new equipment line item. We replaced all of the fire and fire apparatus radios for the volunteers. EMS has replaced all of theirs, and we most recently replaced all in law enforcement. The one first responder discipline that we haven't addressed yet are Berkeley Fire. So there's a hundred and thirty thousand dollar request in there to allocate, purchase and allocate sixteen new of the XD ingredients, any ones of the water contaminant resistant for the Berkeley Fire responders.
How long do they last?
The ones that they have were purchased in two thousand and five, and they're still using, they store fine. They're into life, into support, they work until they break the fine, but we're getting to the point now where if we don't address them, we're going to end up piecing one at a time, one at a time. And that's been from a programming standpoint, then we have to worry about, will Motorola change something? Now we got one discipline, it's a whole lot easier on us because, okay, here's sixteen more, every time we make a change, it's sixteen of the same. Law enforcement has a hundred and forty. We write a template for them, it's one for the mobile, one for the portable, as a hundred and forty. That's why. The rest of it, we tried to stay as close to the baseline that we were last year. Like I said, the big ones were the lease and the maintenance on the...
How much do we spend on, you know, I remember years, several years ago, when we first started about talking, the conversations about body cameras and that type of thing, and we talked about, you know, the cost. And then, you know, when we finally got into doing, doing that, what, what type of funding does that take to keep all of that going?
Well, one of the things we're going to talk about in a few minutes is requests for the cops grant outfitting. So a body camera's about fifteen hundred dollars. That's not your cost. The cost is keeping that video. So you have cameras on every officer, you have cameras at animal control, cameras in home confinement, and cameras in all law enforcement cars. Probably a good estimate, probably about ten grand a year to store, maintain and stuff.
Not too bad.
No. The flip side to that coin is we're a self-hosted, so our stuff stays here. Other smaller agencies, they offer what's called software as a service, where you don't really have it, it's cloud-based. We looked at that. Our, we use a product made by WatchGuard that Motorola bought, and they really, really, really wanted to sell us the new hosted stuff, one of the things that we do. So we said, okay, here's our total cost of ownership the way we do it, here's our total cost of ownership the way you're selling us. And it was like a sixty thousand dollar swing annula. And I said, I'm not going to go present to the bottom office as that, but if you want to come upstairs, they'll listen for not ten seconds and they'll say, oh, thank you. But we do it pretty efficient because of our size. So it's not cheap, and it's on no means just the cost of the camera, right? And the, the new sheriff's administration and the prosecuting attorney got together and made some policy changes on how long we keep it, what we do, kind of inflated some costs, but still well within what we expect.
And what they're doing is all cutting edge technologies, so that any questions about changing of custody, anything like that, I mean, the days of the deputy taking the, you know, the CD out of the cruiser and taking it in and downloading, and it's done. As soon as that cruiser was up to five, ten, it's, it's downloaded. There's no, there's no way for a person to manipulate that, so.
And I would, I would imagine as the future goes, that'll even go away.
It is, it's going away right now. We now do a cellular reload.
Yeah.
Their reloads, they drive down the road now.
Right. My, my truck is, my truck, yeah, I mean, it's got Bluetooth Wi-Fi, all that.
On-star, all that wrapped.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it could record in real time.
Yeah, so that evolution is happening right now. In the cars are, the internet lives in every cruiser. We have a firewall in every cruiser, and depending on who or what, we have it in every fire truck, every ambulance. So I mentioned the new video wall, nine one one, coming in the near future, you're going to walk down to this big ten-foot by ten-foot screen, you'll look up there and you'll see people. You've seen, you've seen that New York, you've seen Boston where they have these sensors, and you have a catastrophe or a big event, you're going to write up and graphically see what's going on. We're, we're rolling right into it. It's here. It's here. So as you well know, we've had our cars where we've had an accident, we have someone say, that vehicle was going ninety miles an hour. No, ma'am, it was one twenty-two. It wasn't long. So...
I remember when we tested it. Remember when we tested it, the first man? We tested it, and we're like, oh, well, that's real nice. That guy was going a hundred miles an hour on eighty-one. That was the first test.
Right.
It was like, yeah.
You're fired.
Huh?
You're fired.
Yeah, that didn't work out real well for him.
Any questions I can answer for you on the IT side?
The IT budget, you know, and I give Gary a hard time about the IT budget increasing, but we have become the service provider of choice, not only for the county and what we're paying the county, it's just, it's just a fragment of what we would be paying if we were, if we was paying someone from the outside to do it, but all the, all the outside agencies now depend on our IT department, and you can see that when I come in with the state budget revisions every month on all the checks, all the payments that we've received for IT services. But there are also the, the IT department of choice by, really by the public service, public safety agencies of the city of Martinsburg. They all depend heavily now on, on our IT department, which says something about the credibility that they've been able to build up over the years.
And, and it's efficient, right? And I know Council President Kopey, they were asked many times over, you know, the price point of what you sell our time for. We don't want to compete with the open market because we don't want to get in business as late, but there are things that we can do that just can't be done out there anywhere near the price point we can do it. So everyone wins, from the CBB to the claims of authority to the airport.
To the taxpayer.
Correct.
The taxpayer, you know, we're providing, we're providing these services for all the outside agencies, and that frees up some of that money that they would be spending on those services or not be able to get those services, to be able to spend it on other things that benefit that, you know, that particular agency. So, no, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a great benefit, what you guys do to help the, help the community as a whole. You know, if you look at, some people don't believe in the trickle-down, but if you look at the trickle-down effect of what it has, you know, to be able to free up money and be able to do stuff without burden in that pocketbook with, you know, spending the high and, and, or not even, not even moving in that direction and staying behind.
Right.
You know?
I can tell you, and Alan mentioned, the reefer contractual obligations, when we started this, this effort in two thousand and seven, we immediately reduced tenfold what it was costing us. Assume those responsibilities on the shoulders of very, very few, promise that we would show that.
Having talked in circles. Having talked in circles.
I'm sorry.
Do it.
And...
Don't be gone too long.
Those numbers, those numbers kind of crept away, and that was a long time ago, right? Fourteen years ago. Going back to recapture those values of those contracts, we've passed them now, but we're doing fifty times the work. So I'm proud and confident to continue to grow and continue to press forward through the world. I really, it feels good.
It's, and it's the future. Gary, have you, since, since I've left, you know, the emergency services, have you been able to upgrade your drone?
No, our drone still does a good job. We've not really had any, any really pressing desire, any or need for what we can't do. We could in a second.
I just didn't, I didn't know if the thermal...
Thermal is there, thermal is there. We, it's funny, as you well know, you don't really know what you need in emergency service to that kind of, kind of training. It's a big investment to let it sit in the box, and in that one time, you've got some fugitive in the field or whatever it is, and you're flying right over in thermal. We've, I've talked to both homeland security and law enforcement about, you know, do you want that yet? And not really got any big biters. It's hard, priorities, right? You know, pick your poison, where you want to invest and what you want to do.
I just, I just know that there were numerous times that we had employed...
The drone?
The drone, you know, at the, at the event down at the shore treatment. I just, I just know that there were numerous times that we had employed.
The drone?
The drone, you know, at the, at the event down at the shore treatment plant, we were able to get a real good view of, of cobble with that particular tank, you know, have used it on the quarry, have used it on the railroad.
Yeah. We've been all over the place with it. And we could in a second. If, if I really felt the demand was there or one of them came and said, one of the disciplines came and said, man, please do it, we're gonna use it, I just haven't heard it yet. So being as in your telling, say, we're seeing it, we can do it.
First, first one was borrowing mine, wasn't it?
It was, the first one was borrowing yours.
We didn't wanna talk to Tracy.
Who?
There's, yeah, there's, yeah, but no, it's, it's, there's a new area. I mean, she just recently talked to us about the need for helicopter. Tracy, she could get us some money for helicopter. No, we don't need the helicopter. So, but we, we might be able to, we'll talk to her, maybe we can do something.
We could borrow one of her a little bit if we could use it, set those units over on the senior services.
That's right.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a, it, it's amazing technology. So what is something like the thermal cost?
Three, three thousand. With a good cannon. Oh, you're wrong. You spend twenty-five grand on drone if you want to, but we're, we're using a DJ four pro, it's a step above your three.
Right.
That does a great job. Still quadcopter, but does a good job. Law enforcement invested in the little ones, the smaller DJI, what it is, they have it. But I mean, I have a, a certified drone operator ready to rock and roll, so when we go out, we do it. I'm not saying they aren't, I'm just saying it's not something you just pull out like back then, the laws have changed. We're class D airspace here, so you know, flying that thing up there and yourself in a lot of trouble, really fast. Black SUV shit up and it's not sheriff's department.
Right, but you gotta go four hundred feet, don't you?
You do. But in here in class D, it's, it's in tree top. You go above trees. Talk a little bit, any other IT questions? Talk a little bit about central garage?
If we're good.
Okay. Six hundred and thirty-eight service requests on one guy's back. Part of what we've done, we still just do internal service work, right? It's just any vehicle that's in is part of our fleet. Transit Authority is a great partner, they're doing a great job. Logistically, you know, back and forth down there, it's tough. COVID has really hurt. I mean, they, they had, I think at one point they had all three of theirs out positive here a while back or at least testing. So we rotate around locally when we can. We've started doing some work ourselves at Baltimore Street. That, I do have a request to an addition down there. Right now I'm using IT staff to augment when Matt vacation's sick or he's went to the Transit Authority and it's greater than what it should have been, it's gonna have to be left, I gotta send some of that help along with the outfitting cost that I mentioned. Even though we've done thirty-five cars, I'll bet you we've touched a hundred different ones for service, from fire trucks to ambulances to our own cars, brake fix stuff like that. We used to job out or we just didn't do it, so everything we're about half. So the demand is there, the statistics are there to say that I can keep another person busy in that effort. Our fleet's large enough and we have aspirations of a little more growth on that side. I think we can do things a little better. I mentioned doing other things ourselves. And we've already started, not certified mechanic work, but like a whole change and stuff like that. It's a half hour transport to and from just to change oil. So we started doing little stuff like that ourselves. So as we grow, it just becomes more cost effective. Uh, we've got the space, we've got the equipment, we've got skill and the tools. So that's really the only request I have on the central garage side. It's staffing to help continue to grow in. And if, if it comes down to it, we'll continue to do it where we are, but it's as cost effective as it could be if I was staffed.
I haven't been out there, we got a lift out there.
We do, we do. We do, uh, works well, use it all the time.
It's slick, dude.
Yeah, it's, if you don't know, four post lift has casters, we can move it.
Yeah.
Just cool. Bought it up in Hanover, PA. It's a nine thousand pound lift.
That's great, huh? I've, I've installed some of them for.
Okay. Yeah, this one isn't even attached to the floor, it's free sitting. It's got a special set of casters, you can pick it up, move it out of the box. But that piece of the puzzle of what we do down there, the demand is even. It's like IT was fourteen years ago. Hey, this radio doesn't work. Hey, my light doesn't do this or hey, this timer's not working. Or before it was set, okay, we call someone, come service and Eddie knows, Eddie's been there. You know how it works, you know, you got a fire truck in the side, you have to find something in with it, do this and that. We're doing that kind of stuff all the time.
How's that building working now?
Building works out wonderful. Doing is awesome. Specifically in the decommission, the purchase, storage of brand-new cars inside safe, under lock and key and protection, and then decommission, keep them inside. We left one outside, guess what wasn't there in the next day? We're wrong. So we've got a Jeep Patriot with no capping, third one, if you like it outside. So building works out really nice for getting this game going. And if the council continues to pay attention, where you have the detail to the fleet and we're moving in through and we can keep them inside and dry and out away from whatever defenses are nice outside, which is good, defenses can't get it to one lead. It's nice.
I, I don't know, I don't know why I haven't, I haven't heard of any large, um, large prosecutions for catalytic converters because there's an enormous amount of them being installed and they, the legislature has made, changed rules for salvage yards, that they have to have documentation of all of them, but yet somebody's gotta be taking them.
It's crazy. The metal that's in there, I knew and I've forgotten what that metal is or getting out of those things.
But it's great.
Right.
Platinum.
Something, yes.
The heavy metals.
It's great, no, it's the stuff they mailed out and get out of them and this much is worth a couple hundred dollars.
Air two liter control buses.
In the judicial center.
In the judicial center parking lot.
Cut them off.
No, I had, I had five Penske trucks parked right in a lot. They're, they're outside the fence though and all five of them cut them off. Of course, that's not, you know, I don't have to pay for that, that's Penske, you know? They're responsible for that, but, but five of them.
Get a chance in the next month or so, stop down at seven fifty Baltimore Street.
Yeah, I need to do that.
Just see the outfitting of these new fours. The technology that's involved is incredible and to think that our guys are doing it. We had the, the manufacturer come in and give a, what, a couple day training session. That, that's been it and our guys are doing this. I mean, it, it's, it's pretty, it's, and Garrett, when we started down this road five years ago, we actually went down to priority install to see how they were doing it and we were pretty amazed five years ago, the way they were doing it and, you know, we went to the low profile.
Light bar.
Light bars on the hood. Well, we don't even do light bars now, it's all.
Stick the top something.
Yeah, it's, it's really, really, really neat and to think our guys are, our employees are, are doing that's pretty amazing and when you look at the miles and miles of, of wiring that's in the trunk of one of these vehicles, it's pretty impressive.
And when you, when you're seeing drilling holes with the step bid in a brand-new fender of a twenty twenty-three vehicle, you get a little anxiety, but we have templates and we have, actually have magnetic templates that snap right on the fenders and mark it with the N and tap it out.
I've been out and I've, I've messed with cars, you know, most of my adult life and I've stood there and I looked at inside and I'm like, no way.
It's crazy.
No way. There's wires everywhere, panels off, I was like, oh, Lord. I know, I just, I just bought a brand-new truck and I bought some accessories and you had to drill and sew them in and do stuff and I was like, hmm, man, should I even be doing this? You know, you know where to take it. Well, and then I was like, you know, whatever, man, I'm just gonna do it, you know, but it worked out. They had it, they got it pretty, if you go with the templates and that type of thing.
Yeah, and they're all uniform. One of the, the features of these new cruisers, you'll see, if you ever roll up and Eddie can appreciate this, if you go to a scene and there's fire trucks and ambulances and four, five police cars, it's like it's wrecked one-on-one, I mean, all the lights, the new technology that's in the sheriff's front vehicles, they know where they are based on GPS signaling, so when they pull up, you can have five cruisers, they sync the light pattern all on kids, it's pretty cool.
It's probably a whole lot better on your mind.
I'd say so.
Eyes or whatever.
I'd be asking, I did it for a few decades. It's crazy on one of them, seeing a light.
I, I was trying to, I would walk up like this in the blind mirror like. Yeah. What, um, and I haven't even been in the file room that's down there at nine one, or nine one at that.
Oh, we're, it, it's nice.
We just use.
Power racking, it worked out.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, it could be utilized better, but we've kind of got stuff out of them. That building still has lots of opportunity. Can I answer any other questions on the fleet budget?
What, what are we, the, by doing the install ourselves, savings per car?
So probably about thirty percent, but we reinvested that money into better technology so that the cash out of pocket stayed, stayed the same as a neutral transition. So you've got, instead of this, you bought this and cost the extra. But about thirty percent of the same hundred that we could do it better. So, and do it right here.
Well, I'll tell you, I know Matt's not really involved with that, that side of, of the operation, but, you know, you, you put that work ticket in, you know, within the next day, he's got, he's already got his schedule to go, he picks it up, it's, it's seamless.
It is.
He does a very good job.
Thank you, I'll let him know. And part of that, and you'll remember the pitch to this, if Officer A isn't taking it and doing it, he's, that person is doing an officer work, right? So all of that time, and we're service people, that's what we do. So his, his intent, hard is to handle your time as quick and as fast so you get back to doing what you want to do. So we work hard at that, both IT ends and.
And he's the one that Grunbo takes.
He is, he is. Today he came in, Mr. Bogum's on cookies, like deer strikes. We had four deer strikes in what, two weeks?
Yeah.
And if you've been to a body shop lately, it's, my truck was wrecked in December, it doesn't even fill a man. That's my personal.
God.
Yeah.
Any of those had the bars?
No, no, they were all older Eddie. None of them had them, they're all older. Yeah, none of them had the bars. We, we took, we salvaged, we had a totaled Explorer that we took the bumper off and put it on one of ones of them, had a small crack on the one, so we fixed that ourselves.
When we pulled thirty-two into new cruisers, because we took delivery of all the cruisers in a matter of, you know, period, they were all moved inside, but then when we were down there looking at them, we, it, it dawned on us that all the outfitting, the equipment that was needed for outfitting was laying there also to the tune of almost a half a million dollars. So we had to actually increase our contents coverage for seven fifty Baltimore Street because if the building burned, we knew that the vehicles were covered under our fleet, but all the, all the outfitting materials, wiring and, and equipment, we had, we, so we increased our inland drain, our, our, our blankie contents policy by five hundred thousand just for outfitting.
Which brings me to the next item on the agenda is the declaration of surplus. There's a list in my memo of all of the vehicles that are there. None of them are fleet-worthy. We continue as we retire these to look at some opportunity.
I can't believe we still got a ninety-eight Crown Victoria.
Yeah, one of those, one of those came in for a brake job and took it, put it on the lift and the frame was in half. Well, that one's gonna go back and run. So we do. Making a concerted effort, we had a non-police all-wheel-drive Dodge Charger, fifty couple thousand miles, was a, an ex administrative car. We're gonna get in a Mako thousand dollar white paint job on it to replace that, go with back end. So all of this stuff you're looking here minus the two KAMs, um, those will probably bring good money at auction, uh, the rest of that stuff.
I guess that's the Jeep Liberty without the.
That's the Jeep, yeah, we should have put without catalytic converter on it. But I mentioned in the top of the memo, the last time we went through this effort, we had had a couple requests from some small ancillary agencies around the state and I think, I don't know, was it five percent, ten percent, the council said of the total that they would offer up?
Ten percent.
Ten percent. Uh, I hope that still applies. Lieutenant Kimball has asked, I, I talked to Adam Janette, who is the mayor down there, he, he's called a few times and most recent call was they had a, a K-nine vehicle that a deputy off-duty would go and get in this and they would use a K-nine in Kimball and he said it was sitting out on the corridor and the frame had snapped in half on it. So I said, well, the council will probably offer up something, we just, of all of these, none are worth having in our fleet for what we do. They're all high miles, have problems, ready to go. They're already off of insurance, they're already decommissioned, uh, it's just a matter of the council, the claimant surplus and then auction them, minus whatever, if they're agency, ten percent. But for any agency our size, there's nothing.
And, and you're going to, you're gonna check with them first?
I would like to if the council says I can, would like to offer to you.
I mean, you, you know what he's talking about Eddie?
Yeah. Particularly there's a, a Expedition, one of those two twenty-tens, it's decent, it's ugly, uh, but it's decent and work wonderful down there.
And if you remember, it was with the stipulation that they come pick it up.
Yeah.
We're not gonna deliver it. They want it, we'll donate it to them, we'll transfer the title over to them, but they have to make arrangements to come get it.
Remember, we've done that before.
We have. And, I mean, even like Jefferson County had mentioned some interest, but we don't have anything in there that any county would want to put in pursuit, kind of. These chargers, if you don't, this charger technology back then, they had it where the cylinders would, would slow down and stop firing on the, on the particular cylinders to be fuel efficient. Well, in that instance, it files, the lifters become issues. Half of those, they got lifters laying down, they sound like chatterbox.
And the sheriff should be commended for getting rid of those two KAMs.
Yes.
Have been around.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I'll, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion on the vehicle declaration of surplus. Yeah, so moved. I got it. Motion to the second and other discussion? If not, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Thank you. The last one is the outfitting for your COPS grant staff. So if you recall, the council approved the sheriff for additional options. I read Alan's memo to you that clearly said that didn't include outfitting for the officers. The intent is to use some of the twenty fifteen carses that are getting retired with the implementation of a new, uh, Explorers. We've already decommissioned pieces of this, we've already taken the internal car cameras out, we've taken the radios out, not destructed, just removed and put them in for new vehicles. After placing our camera, made body cameras, um, all of the stuff that's supported in there, there's internet modems, like I told you, there's CAD licensing, there's VPing software, uh, there's their portable radio, anything technology, their desk computers, their desk phones, all of that stuff. The outfit, those fours, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Little, it's like a hundred and twenty-eight change, I just rounded up, uh, we'll only spend what's necessary. Like if the council so chooses, we will keep four of the twenty fifteen, the best of the twenty fifteen in from retiring. They won't come back in the next list of, hey, let's declare these surplus, they'll use those, but we need to get them ready to use. And the reason I'm here now is they're starting to add people now, a lot of that stuff's six weeks out, eight weeks out.
And if you remember, the current fiscal year, we budgeted, the council budgeted eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars in our capital fleet account. That was to take care of the four car loans that we have as well as we paid cash for five additional vehicles, we did finance them, but we also set aside money for things like this. So we don't need the addition, we don't need any additional budget appropriation, but we need you to know that we are gonna be spending an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of, out of Department nine sixty, which is the capital vehicle count.
Do you, you want a motion on it then?
Yes, please.
Please.
I move to approve.
A second.
Have a motion in a second? If there's no discussion, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And your new deputies can have technicals.
How many vehicles do we have now?
Total? Total? I, one sixty?
Fifty, probably.
Cause there's, I think it's around a hundred in law enforcement, give or take.
Guessing it's over a hundred.
Yeah, yeah, right there. And all in pretty good shape after that. There's, Alan mentioned, we did to you last week about, you know, vehicles, I think probably five this fiscal year. Nothing that, and then the next set will be this twenty fifteen, um, Haraces that I just mentioned there. They'll be high miles come twenty, twenty, probably next, twenty-three, twenty-four. Those will be high miles at much inside. They'll be, they'll be over one fifty by there. That'll be the next set. Those are your, twenty, twenty-fifteen's will be yours soon as we get these ten out.
Okay.
And when you started this, as you see there, nineteen ninety-eight. And but what we're not hearing are, uh, low motors because of the lack of oil or lack of maintenance. You're not hearing any of that that we've heard in the past.
You know, and, and I'll have to say, I don't think we've heard a lot of car accidents that we've just shook our head over in the last year either, that, uh, you know, we're just, you know, somebody running up on somebody's porch or something, you know what I mean? Just, or, or three guys running into each other or something crazy, you know what I mean?
The sheriff and the team are doing a good job working that side of the land stand.
Yes, but they're doing some training too.
Kudos to them, for sure.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Do you have anything else, Alan?
Yes, sir. Mister President Prokam, kinda sort of. I'm reading your journal.
Let me hit this thing. Thank you.
You said this, Gary?
We're out of here.